Good evening. Is there anyone here for public input? Anyone for public input? All right, review and approve Consul's agenda.
Move to approve.
Move to approve as presented.
Sorry, but I'd like to remove the sales tax ordinance number eighty-five, letter six B. We're gonna bring that back. We've got to have some further discussion with our legal consultant on that.
Okay.
Remove. Move to approve as amended.
Second. Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Consent agenda items: approve six twenty-six, twenty-three, council meeting minutes. Item B, approve six twenty-nine, twenty-three, council meeting minutes. Item C, approve seven seventeen, twenty-three, council meeting minutes. Item D, approve water treatment facility improvements, request for proposals. And item E, approve Babe Ruth charitable gambling donation.
I'd like to pull D.
B?
D as in dog.
Oh, D as in dog.
Water treatment plant.
Okay. Somebody, somebody want to move to approve A, B, C, E?
No move.
All second. Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Item D, Frank?
Yeah, in that proposal, it says we're gonna release the bed like in October, but I must have missed the whole conversation on financing.
That was my question also.
That's part, that's part of their job, too.
They're gonna help identify the financing.
It's a minefield out there now for financing, so.
There are a lot of different options with this through the state. You're trying to figure out how you're gonna pay for that.
How do I know I'm going to if I don't, if there's no way to pay for it?
Well, we have to first find out what we can actually, what we actually need, cost it out, then they go through that, so. That's why I put it in there. If, or I can't remember the exact words.
It was some, it was loose language about if we're able to or something.
Right, exactly.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear because I thought I missed a whole conversation.
Not pinning ourselves down to saying we're gonna build it here and, because I don't have an idea where we're coming from the money either, so. That's their job.
So this isn't a... It's a request for proposals to tell us what they're gonna build it for, how much it's gonna cost.
And how can we pay for it?
And we're gonna, then we're gonna see if we can pay for it.
I was gonna pull the same one, so I don't know, you know?
It can be, there, there are some, there are some funding through the state. There's also the opportunity of go af, go after bonding money. And then there's also potential mitigation factors, if there are anybody, you know, that we have found to be at fault with any of that, that could also be a part of it. But this is our next natural step that we need to look at, to be able to really get a handle on those pieces of it. So I know it's, I understand the concerns with it, but I think that's really where we need to be.
I'll move to approve item D.
All second. Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Item six, item A, twenty-twenty-two audit.
Good evening. My name is Justin McGrath. I'm with Conwy Duke and Shbisi and the city's auditors. And I'm here tonight to present to you the twelve thirty-one, twenty-twenty-two audit report. And you've probably got a few different products from us. The format we're gonna follow tonight is the, the presentation, it's a kind of a summary of everything that's in your audit. If you're looking for more detail, you have more questions, your audit and financial statements are a great place to start. So, but as, as I'm going through any of this, if you have questions, please feel free to stop me and ask your questions. So going to our presentation, pages one and two, these first two pages really summarize what our independent audit report is. It outlines the responsibilities of both parties, you at the city and us as auditors. It describes the intent of our audit, which is determine if your financial statements are free of material misstatement. And the big takeaway is on page one, that your financial statements are presented fairly, in our opinion, that can be relied upon for gauging performance of the city as well as for future decision-making purposes. On page three, we jump into the numbers, and we start with your statement of net position. This is the overall balance sheet of the city. We look at it in twenty-twenty-two compared to twenty-twenty-one, so you can see some of the changes in the city's balances between the two years. Starting at the top, current assets, these would be items like your cash balances, accounts receivable, prepaid items. You had an increase in your current assets in twenty-twenty-two compared to twenty-twenty-one. That's largely due to increasing your cash balances, proprietary funds, water and sewer being the bigger ones. Along with increases in amounts owed to the city from other governments, primarily the city of Saint Cloud with the joint street project going on there in twenty-twenty-two. Your non-current assets, these are typically infrastructure, equipment, buildings, those types of items. You did have a decrease in twenty-twenty-two compared to twenty-twenty-one. That's largely due to depreciation on your, your current outstanding assets, outpacing any new additions you had during the year. And then on the bottom half, your liabilities, current liabilities, these are routine bills, accounts payable, salaries, wages payable. And included in that item is also contracts payable. So that increase you're seeing in twenty-twenty-two is largely due to contracts payable, amounts owed for the Wade Avenue project that were, for work that was done in twenty-twenty-two, paid in twenty-twenty-three. Then your long-term liabilities, debt balances, your pension liability. You know, overall, your long-term liabilities related to the debt went down as you had no new debt in twenty-twenty-two, and you continue to make your scheduled debt payments. But your debt pension liability did increase in twenty-twenty-two, and that's largely due to PARA. PARA is Public Employee Retirement Association. Their, their overall liability went up, so your proportionate share that you record on your statement of net position went up as well. Then in the bottom half, your net position, you know, if you could sell off all the assets to the city and pay off all your debt, this is really what's, what's left over. You know, your net investment in capital assets, that increased as your debt balances decreased. And your restricted net position decrease, that's cash that you hold for a specific purpose, excuse me, is that was spent and converted into those capital assets, primarily being the local option sales tax dollars that you received during the year. So your overall net position, it's kind of continued that trend of increases we've seen over the past several years, which is the right direction for, that you would want the city to go in. And this is all operations, all activities, all funds in, in one slide here. On slide four, or excuse me, page four, we have the general fund, we look at the general fund a little bit closer. It's the main operating fund of the city. We start with its cash and investment balances, not only in twenty-twenty-two but the prior four years, so you kind of see where that trend has been. You did have a decrease in your cash balances in, in twenty-twenty-two compared to the prior year. It's about a million dollar decrease, and a lot of it is due to capital activity, so street road projects that were done during the year. That's what's driving down that cash balance in your, in your general fund there. And a portion of that is gonna be reimbursed from the city of Saint Cloud. So I would expect in twenty-twenty-two, or excuse me, twenty-twenty-three, that balance to go back up closer to pre-twenty-twenty-two levels. And then on page five, we look at the activity of the general fund. And again, twenty-twenty-two and the prior four years, you kind of see where that's been. Your total expenditures overtook the revenues of the general fund in twenty-twenty-two. A lot of that is due to capital activity that's recorded in the general fund. And then your overall fund balance took a decrease with that as well now. One metric we like to use as auditors is look at your fund balance in terms of months' worth of expenditures of, of the fund. So right now, the general fund's sitting at about five months' worth of expenditures in that fund balance, which is a, it's a good ratio to have if there are any large unexpected costs within the general fund, or if there's delays and remittances from the state or the county, so on and so forth. So the general fund seems to be sitting at a very healthy fund balance going into twenty-twenty-three. Digging in the activity a little bit more on page six, we look at the revenues of the general fund. Taxes have historically been the largest source of revenue for the general fund, that's no change in twenty-twenty-two. One item, your intergovernmental revenue did have an increase in twenty-twenty-two compared to twenty-twenty-one. And there was some additional street aid that came in, not only for the Wade Avenue project but from the state. And then a new COPS grant that you got, it wasn't, I guess it wasn't new in twenty-twenty-two, you just didn't get a, an award in twenty-twenty-one. Now you got it in twenty-twenty-two again. And then your, your ARPA funds, so the coronavirus, state and local coronavirus relief funds. You did receive your second half payment of that in twenty-twenty-two as well. So I would say your intergovernmental revenues are, you know, even in twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, in twenty-twenty-two, with all the pandemic funding, have been abnormally higher than they normally would be. So I would expect that to come back down in twenty-twenty-three going forward. Then on page seven, we look at the expenditures of the general fund, and we look at this by, by department. So which department is using those revenues brought in by the general fund? You had some increases in twenty-twenty-two, public safety saw some increases there due to operation costs, public works saw some increases there, largely due to capital projects. Wade Avenue Street Project being the, the larger one. And then your cultural and rec. So this is where the amphitheater operations are recorded. So in twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, you kind of have two full years of operations there. And you, you look at the revenues being brought in by that amphitheater, along with some of these operating costs of the amphitheater. And the amphitheater's getting very close to breaking even, I guess, without those one-time capital costs. There's still some improvements being made out there, probably some infrequent or, or one-time capital expenditures like LED screens and golf carts. But if you remove those items, hopefully those infrequent or one-time items, you'll see that the amphitheater is, is getting very close to coming out operationally. So that's great for that, that project, that facility, you know, two years in. On page eight, we look at the special revenue funds. Special revenue fund has a specific purpose, to provide a specific service around the city, and it has a dedicated funding source for that. The local sales tax is your largest special revenue fund. You did have a, a higher increase in your fund balance compared to some of the prior years, and that's largely due to less transfers out of that fund. That helps support a lot of projects around the city in the past, to a lesser degree that was done in twenty-twenty-two. Then it also helps pay the two thousand eighteen A bond, which it did continue to do in twenty-twenty-two as well. And then some of the other special revenue funds on page nine, the TIF districts. So TIF District number two had a large decrease in, in its fund balance, largely for those funds being spent for a specific purpose within that district. And then same with TIF District two dash one and, and three dash one, they continued to bring that TIF revenue in and reimburse the developers. Then the last governmental funds I'm gonna talk about, the capital project funds, excuse me. You got a couple of them on here, and the slide's been busy during the past, but you're down to two now. The big one being the amphitheater project, that's been going on for several years now, did have another decrease in fund balance in twenty-twenty-two as that project's nearing completion and those funds are, are being spent out. So there's just a, relatively speaking, a smaller fund balance in that amphitheater fund for any last closeout items related to that project. And then a new one this year, the public safety facility. This one is set up for hopefully construction of a, a public safety facility in the future here. And the revenues are the, the change in fund balance in that fund is really due to closing out old debt service funds that had been paid off that had cash or assessments receivable left over to be collected. Those all got put into the public safety facility for that future project when it happens. Moving away from the governmental funds to the proprietary funds of the city, we'll start with the water fund. Water fund cash and investment balances, over the last five years, you can see it, it had been trending upwards until last year. But the water fund did have some interfund borrowing from the general fund for, for several years. And in twenty-twenty-one, that was paid off, so that was paid back to the general fund. You saw a slight decrease in that cash balance. And then in twenty-twenty-two, you know, if you look at your cash flow statement and your financial statements, you're seeing cash provided by operations. So the water fund is generating that cash, building up that reserve for maybe a, a future water treatment facility, so. On page twelve, we have the activity of the water fund. You see the reven, revenues and the expenses and the overall net income amount of the water fund over the past five years. It's been pretty good at setting that margin and what your rates are versus what it costs to, to operate the fund. So you're seeing, you know, kind of that steady increase in that, that net, net position amount year over year, which really tells us, yeah, as auditors, that you're, you're looking at those rates, making sure that they're still set at an appropriate level to keep that fund operating efficiently. Then on page thirteen, we look at a little more detail of that net income amount. We remove depreciation out of that, it's a non-cash expense, it does impact your cash balances. And we compare that to get, or we look at that against your principal requirement on your, your long-term debt in that fund to see the water fund's ability to pay its debt simply through operations. So you can see over the years, it's always been able to, to meet that mark. In twenty-twenty-two, it's, it's really no different. So I think there's two years left on that two thousand thirteen A bond. And then we potentially might have more debt if you build a, a new water treatment facility. But as of right now, it's, the water fund is, its rates are set up to, to cash flow appropriately to make those long-term debt payments. Then on page fourteen, we look at the sewer fund. So sewer fund cash and investment balances, this one's been trending up in the right direction, didn't have any interfund borrowing. And it's building up that reserve for, for future capital replacement and improvements, so. And it kind of, it's kind of reflected here on page fifteen, when you look at the operations of the sewer fund. Again, depreciation is a, a big expense in that sewer fund, along with contracted services. So the sewer fund rates are, are set at least in twenty-twenty-two to cover not only depreciation of your, your current capital assets, but also for any increases in, in contracted services to the city of Saint Cloud for handling that wastewater. And the sewer fund doesn't have any debt, so there's no debt slide there. Then on page sixteen, stormwater fund. So stormwater fund cash and investment balances have, have been increasing over the years, a smaller increase in twenty-twenty-two compared to some of the prior years. So it's pretty consistent between the years. There's more activity in that stormwater fund in twenty-twenty-two than the prior years, wages being your largest expense within the fund. So that's what's kind of normalizing that cash balance between twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two. So looking at your, your utility funds, water, sewer, stormwater, they all have built up, I guess respectable cash position. So I know we've probably, well, myself and, and Paul and my predecessor always liked to harp on maintaining water and sewer rates and staying on top of those. And you're seeing the payoff on, undoing that here. Yep, then I guess on page seventeen there, I got ahead of myself, but here's the activity of the stormwater fund. You can see it had a, a net income or a net loss amount, largely due to that increase in wages that I just talked about. Then on page eighteen, we move away from the numbers and look at compliance. The city's compliance with a few different rulemaking bodies, one of them being the state of Minnesota, Minnesota leave compliance. So as we do our testing of your balances, we also test compliance with state statutes for things like depository of public funds, conflicts of interest, contracts and bidding. We're happy to report that we came across no issues of non-compliance. So that usually tells us, auditors, a couple of different things. One, that your team here makes sure that they know what those laws are, and they're making sure they're being followed. So hats off to Shawna and Carla and everybody else here at the city for, for doing that. And then government auditing standards. So we look at the internal control of the city during our audit, as far as from the time a, a bill would come in the mail to the time the check goes out in the mail. And we have one, one material weakness we noted, and it's really related to your financial statements. It's not really related to the, the way the financial information flows through the city, but the preparation of the financial statements. So while everything in here is derived from your financial records, we did put it in this format, and we have to disclose that to you as well. Then on page nineteen, in addition to the financial statements we issued, we can call it a management letter. It's really a letter from us as auditors to you at the governance level that you know how the audit went. Any difficulties we encountered or disagreements we may have had. And you know, it's, it's not just your staff here that we interact with throughout the audit, it's your, your banks, your engineers, the state, the county. A lot of different people were involved to get us to the point we're at right now, and we're very appreciative of that, and thank everybody for their help. And then on page eighteen or twenty, excuse me, recommendations. So we have a few recommendations. One of them is timely bank reconciliation. So again, this year, we had a few issues with the bank reconciliation not being done by, or not being correctly done by the time we got out here. They get fixed relatively quickly after we arrived, but if you can get current with that bank reconciliation process, it's gonna make your life a, a lot easier instead of having to go back six, seven months to figure out what activity happened that in your bank account that didn't get recorded in the city's general ledger, so. That's one thing we want to recommend you keep working towards. Then our fraud reporting policy. So part of our audit, what we do is we ask people at all different levels of the city, you know, from employees, administration, governance, like yourself, questions about fraud, fraud risk that may affect the city, any instances of fraud they know about. And while we're happy to report we didn't come across any instances of fraud, one theme that came up is, we usually ask the question, you know, if you suspected fraud was going on, what's the process for reporting it? And we got some answers that people said, you know, I really don't know who to tell, or what's that process? So we recommend implementing a policy that you can give to your, your team, your staff here, and they'd have a process to follow if they suspect there is fraud going on within the city. It just clear the guidelines up, everybody know what to expect. And you may get some people who'd be more comfortable reporting suspicions of fraud if there's a policy in place. And the last item I have is new accounting standards. So we talk about new accounting standards from year to year. There's a new one coming out for fiscal year twenty-three, it's related to subscription-based information technology arrangements, similar to the LEAST standard I think that I discussed last year when I came out here. It's, it's kind of the LEAST standard but for like IT arrangements, so cloud reporting or cloud computing, software, subscriptions, online subscriptions, those types of items. So what that new standard is, is if you have those types of agreements or arrangements, you'll be booking, or looking at booking a, a new asset on your statement of net position, they call it a right-to-use asset, and a liability for those future payments that may come with the use of that asset. So that's something that we've talked with your team here, they're kind of aware of it now. When we come back out for twenty-twenty-three's audit, we'll look at implementing that accounting standard. With that, I want to thank you for the opportunity to have me out here again. And does anybody have any questions to me right now?
Consul, got any questions for the auditor? Anybody? All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I just want to say thank you, Justin, to your, yourself and your team, and then also Carla and our staff. This was Carla's first audit that she's made through all by herself. Yay. So I, I appreciate your work and everybody else's as well.
All right, thank you. Need a motion to approve the audit? All second. Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Do we have to have a motion to transfer those funds?
No, that's part of the motion you made.
Okay, all right. I didn't see a motion with it, but.
Yeah, it's in, it's in there, fund transfer and accept the audit.
All right, good. All right, item B we are gonna remove for tonight. Item C, consideration of new pay plan structure and implementation.
So mayor and members of the council, we've had some conversations over the last couple of months related to our new pay plan, structure and implementation process. I have Sarah from Baker Tilly with that can certainly provide, just, you want to, Sarah, do you want to just provide just a brief overview of the pay plan? And I can get it up here.
Certainly. Good evening, everyone.
Yep.
Hello.
I'm gonna share it. Can you bring up the pay plan itself, Sarah?
I can.
All right, you should be able to get it now.
Right. Go ahead and share my screen, everyone. We see that all right?
Not yet. We might be testing our, our compatibility. All right, if you want to, I can't, it, for whatever reason, it's not letting me share it, so. On this screen. If you want to talk in general, I'll pull it up on my end.
Sure. Well, like Shawna said, my name is Sarah Towne, I'm the consulting manager with our compensation and classification team here at Baker Tilly. I also have our director on the call, Jada Kent. So in, throughout this process, with projects like these, when we are doing classification and compensation studies, we have a five-phase process that we walk through. We work on, starting with data collection and project initiation, where we talk with directors and the project team to understand the goals and needs of the organization, why you're interested in doing a study like this. We then work with the organization to understand the current positions within the organization. We conduct our proprietary job evaluation system, which is called SAFE, stands for the systematic analysis factor evaluation. It's basically our tool to evaluate the city's job. And from there, we get the scores and the points, and that is something that the city has utilized for a number of years. And we maintain that system. So moving forward, it's in compliance with the Minnesota Pay Equity, and that is how we are making sure that we are making great assignments based on those job evaluation scores. We also put out a market survey, so we reached, we worked with the city to identify fifteen peer organizations. We reached up to thirteen, we got data from thirteen of them and compiled market reports, so where the city is at in comparison to the market as it is currently. And from there, we also developed some thresholds, so ninety-five percent of market, a hundred and five percent of market, just to be able to have some additional information that the city can then use to determine their positioning in the market and develop their compensation philosophy. Based on the results of market, the city determined to set their pay structures at a hundred and five percent of market. And really, in developing the new structures that we have, I will say, we've, for the most part, kept your existing structures. So you have two pay plans, you have a non-exempt or the hourly employees, and you have an exempt pay plan or those salaried employees. We maintain those, so you still have two pay structures. What we did do is we kept essentially the same amount of steps, so it is still nine steps. And the percentage between steps stays the same, three point seven five. So each year on an employee's anniversary, they gain a step and they go up a three point seven five percent increase. That is all the same. What we have done differently is recalibrate the system and really understanding where positions are at in relation to the market. And right now, positions are moving at incredible rates. We know public safety and public works positions are moving at a very different rate. I see something coming up, Shawna.
Yeah, we are able to see your screen now.
Yeah, all right, let me go forward a little bit. So I want to get to where we're at in terms of pay plan development. So we're drafting the pay plans at a hundred and five percent of market. This is your current existing structure, again, the seventeen grades, nine steps. And what we're proposing looks like this. This is still the non-exempt or hourly positions. Same nine steps, three point seven five percent between. What we do change here is a little bit of that midpoint differential. What we can make sure that we're doing is making sure that the minimums, the starting salaries for positions in these grades, is that they're competitive to market. And then we're aligning that as well to the midpoint at a hundred and five percent of market. I want to show you a visual representation of what this looks like and why I think what we're proposing makes a lot more sense. So this is an analysis, we run everything through a regression analysis, but this is an analysis of what your current non-exempt structure looks like in comparison to market. That dark blue line is what the market conditions currently are. So you can see at the bottom, they're not exactly in aligned, and as we go up the pay structure, those towards the right hand are certainly below market. This is what we are proposing, really an alignment to market. So your pay structure is very much aligned to that market now, and that, again, is just a visual representation of the adjustments that we're proposing. Here you have the non-exempt pay plan with the title and grade assignments. You can see which positions are put in which grade. Again, this is in accordance with the Minnesota Local Government Pay Equity Act. We want to make sure that we are assigning pay grades based on the job evaluation scores, and that is what we've done here. Similar to what we've done with the non-exempt or the hourly employees, we've made also adjustments here to the exempt or salary schedule. This is your current exempt salary structure, so seventeen grades, nine steps, that three point seven five percent between steps. And this is what we're proposing. Just minor adjustments. We've essentially kept your same structure intact, nine steps, three point seven five percent between steps, but we are able to tailor the midpoint differential, kind of, again, that starting minimum to be market competitive and that midpoint to be aligned with market values. These are also aligned at a hundred and five percent of market. I again want to show you the regression analysis, because to me, this is what makes sense. We follow the data. So this is, again, an analysis of what your current exempt pay structure looks like. That dark blue line is the market values for these positions, and that teal blue line is where you're currently at. So this is what we're recommending, an alignment to market. What we can do is these minor shifts that really make sure that the structure that we are putting together is aligned to the market. And what we have here is an alignment at a hundred and five percent of market, that lead market mentality, being an employer of choice in the area. This is the title and grade assignments, where you can see which positions are falling into the grades. Same methodology here, we want to make sure that we're in compliance with the Minnesota Local Government Pay Equity Act. So grade assignments must be made based on those job evaluation scores. on those job evaluation scores. Once we have the finalized title and grade assignments, which we did review these with department heads as well as the project team, um, to get these finalized and settled, um, once they are finalized, we do prepare some implementation scenarios. So you have before you tonight really two implementation scenarios that you can consider, and it's adoption of the new classification and compensation system. Um, there are two scenarios, one for each pay plan. So this is for the non-exempt. Option one is moving employees to the closest step in their proposed pay plan that is really closest to their existing salary without a decrease. Baker Tilly philosophy, we did not get in the business of taking money away from people. So we will never propose a salary decrease for an employee based on the results of a study. So this is taking a look at what their existing, uh, salary is and moving them to the closest step based on that existing salary. Option two, or option one B, is really looking at keeping employees on the same step. If you're in grade four, step two, you would move to that exact same grade four, step two, on the, uh, newly proposed or adjusted pay structures. So you can see that breakdown there. Um, I'll note as well, you can see that percentage increase. So employees that are currently below the new minimum, their number is fourteen employees are currently below the new minimum. So an adjustment there is about a ten point three percent increase. Employees within the range, there's twenty-six that are falling now within their ranges. Um, and then that's a five point nine percent increase overall. The scenarios for the exempt structure are the same as well. So the, again, the first option is employees are moving to the step closest based on their existing salary without a decrease. And option one B, employees are staying on the same step. Um, so again, if they're on a grade nine and a step five, they move to a grade nine, step five, same exact, uh, placement on the new pay structure. Overall, our Baker Tilly recommendations is to approve the, uh, newly developed pay plans and the position grade assignments, really choosing an implementation scenario that's going to address your compensation philosophy, going to meet your business goals, and one that is fiscally sustainable over time. And really, our biggest, uh, recommendation, one that we hope that, uh, you continue is just to continue to maintain the classification and compensation system moving forward. Um, you have already done an excellent job in maintaining the existing structure. So this recalibration to market is a great opportunity to just kind of extend the life of that pay structure. Routinely review positions, make sure job descriptions are updated, review market conditions as you go, um, adjusting the pay structure and salaries annually so you can keep pace with market, and then adopt general increases annually. So employees are also moving and advancing through the assigned pay ranges. As for what's next on our end, we are currently in the employee appeal process. We hope to have those finalized and through your review on August twenty-first at the next council meeting. Uh, we have currently seven, the, uh, employees that are under the appeals process. Um, we know that and kind of expect that the majority of the financial considerations and the implementation figures will not change, um, pretty significantly based on these employee appeals. What you have in front of you is pretty accurate. Um, we've delivered the final report, and then the next is really just to continue to provide training to the city's staff, um, so they can maintain the classification and compensation system moving forward. We're always available to Wake Park for any questions as you continue to, uh, pay, pay employees and make sure that you're competitive within the market values. Happy to take any questions.
Counsel, any questions?
No.
Nope, don't think we have any. I think you did a good job on it, so.
Well, thank you, everyone. Pleasure to be here.
All right. If there's no questions, I need a motion to do something with it. Want to approve the pay plan as presented?
Yeah. I'll, I'm, I'll make a motion of, okay.
I'm just going to get it up for you, but I just had to get back to it.
And keep them on the same step as they were under the old plan.
Yeah, that'd be option one B.
Two B.
One B.
Well, one B there, two B here.
Yeah, I have it as. Okay.
Okay.
There we go.
We got to scroll it up a little bit more, at least on my screen.
There we go.
Does that help you that way? Is that, can you see it all?
Yeah, we can see that.
So the two options before you, which was on our plan for that was the one A, which is the new pay plan structure, well, okay, would be for moving it to closer step. And then the other one was the one B, which is keeping everybody on their same step, uh, from the old plan to the new plan. The two actions that you would have before you this evening would be, um, one.
Separate?
Yeah. Well, I, they can be together.
They're all together, just for twenty.
These two. You, you just have to decide between on this two A and two B, between which implementation option. So the first one is approving the new pay plan structure for, for the non-exempt and the exempt employees. And then you have to determine the type of implementation that you want to do, closest to the step or staying on the same step.
But it can be one motion.
Yes, it can.
I want to implement it and keep everybody on the same step. So I do believe that was option one B.
Yeah.
One and two B.
One and two B here. Yep.
Be there, one, two B. Is there a second to that?
Hold on a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Reluctantly, yes.
Passed unanimously.
Oh, I didn't know what he was saying.
I like it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
You were waiting.
The next.
Are these all separate? No, again, okay. Just, I, I, it's okay. I'm just.
I think they do. I think they are separate, yeah.
I, I don't really know how else to do it that way. So.
But that's fine.
Okay. So these are the MOAs, which with each of our unions, we have four unions. The first one before you is the police admin. Um, and what you, what you need to consider with each of them is that these salary schedules are attached to their existing union contracts. To make any changes to that, we do this MOA just to be able to implement the new. So.
I'll move to approve the MOA with the police admin.
That's all you need.
That's all you need. That's all you need.
All second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passed unanimously. Next one.
I'll move to approve the MOA for.
Police sergeants.
Police sergeants.
All second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passed unanimously.
I'll move to approve the MOA with maintenance workers.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. I think there's one more.
Police officers.
Move to approve the MOA with the police officers.
All second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. All right, thank you. All right, approve bills.
Move to pay the bills.
All second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passed unanimously. I see Zach is still on here. So Zach, maybe I don't have to call you or email you tomorrow. Uh, there's a day of caring. United Way does a day of caring. They wanted the city to do a project this year. Uh, Zach and I have talked a little bit about it, and he's come up with the idea that we should, we can do, uh, some cleanup around the Rock Island Park. The day is, uh, Monday, September eighteenth. It's just for two hours from nine AM to eleven AM. Uh, he's going to have all the garbage bags, the gloves, the vest and all that to clean it up. We need about ten people. Uh, United Way will get them, but I think it'd be a lot nicer if we could get ten city employees. Uh, maybe some, maybe some, uh, council members and if you want to.
Sure. What's the timeframe?
If you want to take that, nine AM to eleven. For you, it's not a real good time. Do you want to take that to the park board maybe and ask them if they want to?
We'll put it out.
Okay, and planning commission and whatever, and see if we can get ten and city employees.
Some emails out to us.
Was that September nineteenth?
September nineteenth, yeah, September, September eighteenth at nine o'clock.
Eighteenth.
For Monday.
That's a long ways away.
Yeah, no, we'll send emails out and stuff.
Get it.
Uh, but Zach's on here. So I think Zach, I think we'll get ten. So I think you can tell, uh, United Way that we probably will get our own people. So.
You know, I do that most mornings.
Sounds good.
All right, thanks a lot. All right. And then, uh, the senior picnic is this Wednesday, the ninth, at Community Park at eleven thirty, I think it starts.
Eleven thirty to like one.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I won't make that one either.
Uh, that's all I have.
Um, I just have one thing. Um, trying to find a time in September to do a budget work session. Um, and after looking at the schedules, um, what I'm wondering is whether or not we could do the work session on September eighteenth, and that would be our normal council meeting day. Then we would add an additional council meeting on the twenty-fifth so that we could actually finally do the formal adoption of it before the end of September, if that would work for you. Because I have, the first two weeks are a little bit of a challenge.
September eighteenth, so we're probably going to start even earlier than.
Well, I'm going to hopefully not. I'll try to keep it, depending upon how much time we have. If I can keep it to just a budget work session, we could maybe start it at four before the council.
Well, that's, okay. Well, we are going to have that and a council meeting.
If I have, if we have anything for the agenda, yes. But then I would look at doing September twenty-fifth for a council meeting, um, because we have to approve the final or the preliminary budget.
I don't know if I'll be there for the twenty-fifth. I'm not sure. But that's all right. You don't need me for that.
We don't necessarily, but I want to make sure that, that leave that up, keeping it op- option open, only because I don't want to, I'm trying to keep our ru- normal routine down as much as I possibly can. So that was the reason why I said that.
Well, was it, you said the twenty-fifth? Was the other possible date?
Yeah, September twenty-fifth is a Monday. It doesn't have to be that. It has to be someday that week to approve that. Um, so if that date doesn't work, I just wanted to throw that out there for you now. Um.
We'll get it all done. Rick's not here, so.
That's right. You don't need me there to get it done.
That's fine. If everyone else is available, that's what, that's what we can do.
And I may be there. I'm not sure yet. All right, anything else?
No, that's all I have.
Got something. Um, this week we've been getting emails from Bill, just to remind people.
Oh.
About the sprinkling ban that's on. I see a lot of people still sprinkling.
Well, that was just today though, right?
No, it went into effect.
No.
It's Friday.
Immediately, but.
I didn't read it till today. So there you go.
We'll get the bill. Dave, you got anything? Bill, you're just biting it.
I know. I just can't wait. No, uh, you're right, Mike. I put that out to you on Friday, hoping to get that out to the media, but, uh, staff, there wasn't enough staff around here and I was too busy to know what to do. So that actually went out today to the news media. So that's why you probably saw it over the weekend. You didn't see any change. That's why. So, uh, just to remind, um, all the property owners in the city Wake Park, a total watering ban was put on today. Um, we are in a severe drought. Um, that means that the DNR notified me on Friday morning that we had to cut our production to own fifty percent more than what we do in January. I expect that to probably go to extreme drought here shortly. That then cuts us down to twenty-five percent. That's where we're at in twenty fi- in twenty-one. So, um, the citizens help and the property owners, we did meet that goal. Um, so I just ask everybody to help, help through their share here.
Is that just for property owners or does like your car washes and things like that happen?
They, no, no, just what lawn watering.
Just the lawn, okay.
Yep. If it gets really, really bad, then there would probably, the next step would be is doing.
Yeah, we did that, I think, in eighty-eight or something. We did shut down car wash. I think it was eighty-eight. It was one year we shut down car wash.
Yeah, it was maybe before my time, but I know that there was a.
Oh, you're not that young. Come on, give me a minute.
Thanks, Mayor.
John?
Yes, sir.
Chief?
Nothing, sir.
The other chief. Laura, you got anything?
No, I don't.
All right, then we are adjourned at seven fourteen.